Welcome, everyone. Lamoore City Council's December 18th Study Session at 6:30 PM. We have two items on calendar for that. Before we go to that, we have opportunity for public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, this will be the time to do that.
Tom Reed, 1060 Parr Avenue, Lamoore. I would just like to thank each of the council members for your service to the city this year. I know that at times I have stood at this podium and been critical of you, but I don't do it with the intention to hurt you, but to improve the city for all of us. And I would especially like to thank Mayor Chedister and Mr., I mean Mayor Madrigal and Mr. Chedister for your, four years on the council and wish you much success in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Study Session Item Number One, which is the King's Waste and Recycling Authority Update.
So, good evening, Mayor and council members. Ms. Spears out this evening. She won't be joining us tonight, so I'm pinch hitting for her. But tonight, we have Nicole Riley from the King's Waste Recycling Authority, which is a joint powers authority between City of Hanford, Lamoore, Corcoran, and the unincorporated portions of Kings County. She should be giving us an update. Thank you.
Let's see, let's make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me? All right. So, thank you for having me tonight. So, as Nathan said, I'm going to be giving sort of an overview to you of the last 20-year history of King's Waste Recycling Authority. I promise I'll do it in a very short amount of time for you. The presentation that I'm giving to you guys this evening is a rendition of a presentation that was given to, or during the city-county meeting that was held on August 28th or 9th, sorry, I can't remember the date. So, we will go through this, and if at any time I yell any acronyms out that you don't understand, I will work really hard not to do that, but you just let me know and I will explain further for you. Okay. So, as Nathan said, King's Waste Recycling Authority, KWRA, is a joint powers authority that was formed in 1989. It's comprised of the cities of Hanford, Corcoran, Lamoore, and then an incorporated area of Kings County. It was created as a regional approach to waste management in Kings County to meet the diversion requirements of AB 939. Those are 50% diversion is what that was. So, recycle 50% of the material instead of landfilling that material. It has grown to meet the requirements of AB 341, which is mandatory commercial recycling, requiring our commercial entities and multifamily complexes to recycle, AB 1826, which is our mandatory organics, and SB 1383, which is a methane reduction organics recycling law through the airboard. So, programs that King's Waste Recycling Authority has, we have a transfer station. Our transfer station is made up of transferring trash to the landfill. We also have a tire recycling program, a construction and demolition debris program, a metal recycling program, as well as an organic waste program, which consists of food, green waste, and wood waste. In addition to that-
Sorry, excuse me real quick.
Yes?
Can you please, real quick, on the noting the organic material, can you please note the service that you provide for our city when it comes to regards to that?
To the organics. So, we are a collection point, or I would say a drop-off site for that material. So, you collect the material, or your residents bring the material to our facility, and then we then deliver it to the compost facility currently.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. We also have a mattress recycling program. That program is free for residents to bring their mattresses out to the site, free of charge, and we dispose of that. We have a household hazardous waste program, which we open the first Saturday of the month. Residents are able to come out and utilize that program and bring out any hazardous waste that they have from their homes. We have a free sharps collection program. So, we have a box at our site that allows residents, the communities, to come in and drop off any of their medical sharp waste, so needle, syringes. We have a free electronic waste, universal waste program. So, computers, laptops, televisions, all of that is collected for free, Monday through Saturday on-site. We have a roll-off program. Our roll-off are those big containers that get dropped off for construction, demolition projects, household, you know, demo projects. So, we have two collection trucks for that and several roll-off containers that we deliver. We also have old landfill sites, and we'll talk about those a little more in detail in just a bit. But I call those our legacy programs, and those are old landfills that are closed in Kings County that we have to maintain and pay for. And in addition to that, lastly, we have our material recovery facility. We're going to call that MRF probably throughout the night, and that is just what we refer to, our recycling center. So, when you're thinking of recycling, that is going to be the MRF as we go through this. At the very bottom, you have a, just a very brief timeline of King's Waste. So, September 1989, the JPA was formed. In 1990, our first landfill, the Corcoran landfill, was closed. 94 to 98, we were operated by Kreek. And then shortly after that, when KWRA, the material recovery facility, opened, we were then operated by Waste Management. That was in November of 1995. From there, we closed Hanford landfill in 1997. And then in 1997, our transfer station also opened due to the closure of the landfill. So, we no longer had a place to throw our trash. We then had to transfer it out. Very small, small map for you to see, but the red squares on here represent all of the closed landfills and/or burn dumps that were located in Kings County. So, we have our Hanford landfill, our Houston Avenue landfill, Corcoran landfill, which is on Nevada Avenue, Kettelman Plymouth, which is in Corcoran, Stratford, and Lamoore. Okay. So, the landfill closures and why those are important. So, King's Waste takes care of all of those landfills that I just described. We are responsible for funding all activities associated with those landfills. When the JPA was formed, all of the cities and the county transferred the responsibility of those landfills to King's Waste Recycling Authority. So, the authority closed the Corcoran, Hanford, and Houston Avenue landfills. Corcoran was active 1973 to 1990. Closure was, construction was completed in the summer of 1997, and it was $880,000 to close that site. Hanford landfill was active 1973 to 1997. The closure construction was completed in July of 2000, and that cost $3.9 million to close, again funded by King's Waste. And the Houston Avenue landfill, not a lot of detail because the closure was quite some time ago, so it was active in the 1950s to 1970. We don't even actually have the year that it was closed, so. So, again, why is that important? Why am I bringing that to your attention? So, as a responsibility of these closed landfills, we are required by Title 27 to provide a financial assurance mechanism. What that means is that we are funding any corrective action programs, so any remediation programs that may have resulted from contamination from those landfills, whether it's air or water. And then we have post-closure maintenance, which is just our general maintenance of the sites. And that will always include groundwater monitoring, gas monitoring, soil monitoring programs. So, the Corcoran landfill has a 15-year commitment of post-closure maintenance, and that's at $578,339. That we must have funded for those activities every year. And we have a 30-year corrective action requirement, which is $178,832. Hanford landfill is on a 16-year post-closure maintenance, which is at about $1.4 million, and a 30-year corrective action at $384,000. Houston Avenue was closed prior to 1988. So, the post-closure maintenance requirements don't go into effect for landfills that were closed prior to that date. So, there is no requirement for that, but they do, they are responsible for having a corrective action mechanism, and that needs to be funded at $216,000, $217,000 per year. So, these deposits, that we're going to call them deposits, are, they have an annual inflation factor that goes in, it's generally 1% to 2% a year, that our deposits must increase. I say quote-unquote "deposits" because what King's Waste does, instead of depositing this money into a reserve account, is we do a pledge of revenue. So, we say that we are going to pledge this money every year in our budget, so I put a placeholder in it, or I have actual costs. So, groundwater monitoring is consistent. We have that already in the budget. We pay for that every, every year. So, we tell the state that we're going to pledge our gate tipping fees to fund these activities should an astronomical event occur, should we have a contamination issue. We have the money that we will use from our gate to fund these activities. And then the last thing I'd like to note on this is that although you see a 15, 30, and 60-year requirement on here, that's generally for any landfill owner or operator in the state. Because we are a municipality, are municipally owned, or we were landfills, those requirements never go away for us. So, we will never see that money wiped out. We will always have to pledge revenue or have deposits for financial assurance. Okay. We'll go through this part rather quickly. It's a lot of data, but please stop me if you need further explanation. So, this is just a tonnage history of King's Waste from 2006 forward. So, the very top line, you're going to see our throughput for our facility. So, that's all activities at the site. So, we are finally in 2019, hoping that we're going to get back to where we were pre-recession at 122,000 tons a year. So, we're hoping we see that this year. Second line is our landfill. So, you can see that that has, even through the recession, it decreased just a bit, but has increased year after year. So, we should have about 88,000 tons landfill this year. The third line is the other transfer stations, so all those other fun programs, the e-waste, the mattresses, sharps, green waste, organics. That line has remained relatively consistent unless there was something major going on in the community at that time. And then the last line, the green line that is stagnant and basically straight, is our recyclable tonnage. So, what you should typically see is that as the trash grows, so that yellow line grows and increases, that our recyclables would as well because it's all based on population. But King's Waste hasn't seen an increase in recyclables, which means that the, so what we see is that that, that our recyclables that we control are still coming to our facility, and I say "control", that would be that the JPA members are bringing them to us, are remaining consistent, but we're not growing. We're not getting any of the extra that is in the community. Budget history, this is just an illustration of where our budget has been. You'll note that there's quite a decrease in the expenses from 2018-19, and I'd like to just note that those are based on fiscal year 2018 is actuals, 2019 is projection. When this presentation was created, obviously, it was August, and we hadn't done any projections. But we would see that at the end of this fiscal year 2019, you're not going to see as a dramatic increase between what our actuals are. So, I just wanted to note that for you. But we are relatively consistent with our budget year after year without many increases. So, note that in 1994, which you don't see on here, King's Waste was built with a bond. It was a $1.4 million bond that was paid off in 94. Or there, we, we got the bond in 1994 to build the facility. It was refinanced in 2004 for $9.28 million. It saved the authority hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then the bond was paid off two years early in 2012, saving another $130,000 in interest. Okay. This is a lot of data, and we're not going to go all, over all of it, but I want to bring to your attention, maybe not even the tons recycled, but the second graph, which is in the yellows and greens, which is the revenue that we get per commodity. So, I want you to look at OCC. So, you can see that OCC, at one point, we generated about $525,000 a year for it, whereas our last fiscal year, we got probably $250,000. So, that's just due to declining markets. We hit a very difficult and low point in the recycling commodity market in July of 2017. China basically put a ban on importation of waste recyclables, and that devastated the recycling economy essentially. So, where we were getting $260 a ton for cardboard, this month, we're at $90 a ton. So, everything has dropped more than half. And that was probably one of our biggest hits. And then mixed paper, you'll see that as well. While mixed paper wasn't nearly as big as moneymaker as OCC, we went from almost $200 a ton to, I think, this last month, we finally got $40 a ton. So, definitely very devastating. Okay. And then this is just another illustration of all the commodities combined. So, in 2017, we were almost, we were probably at $850,000 in revenue for our commodities. We got $650,000 last year, last fiscal year, and this fiscal year, we will probably be around $650,000, so. But when you go and look at like 2000, I don't know, 11, I think, we are at $1.2 million in revenue. So, the markets have been taking a decline for quite some time. It was just a very dramatic hit here in the past year and a half. And then our reserves. So, King's Waste doesn't have, like I said, a ton of money in reserves, but we do have a very healthy reserve account. The green line represents what's in our reserves right now, which is $1.8 million. The orange line will be our rate stabilization fund, which is no longer active, but that was put in place as our bond security measure. Once the bond was done, then that money went into the regular reserve account. So, you see that that increased dramatically at that time. The equipment reserve then is that taupe line that has not been replenished. We never really put money into that. So, you see that dropping over and over and over again. So, we are trying to think of a mechanism where we can start putting money into our equipment replacement reserve. And then the very last is our PERS unfunded liability. Just like everybody else, we've been hit with a PERS unfunded liability. Our board has decided to be very aggressive in attacking that, and we have a fund right now of $462,000 that we're just waiting for our actuary to get back to us that we will then pay down, leaving our PERS funded at, I think, will be at 80% funded with our unfunded liability. Staffing levels. So, again, slides just to show the historical, the history of KWRA's staffing. It has remained relatively consistent over the last 10 years. Salaries, again, when you're looking at 18, 19, unfortunately, we didn't get a huge raise. I wish, I wish we did, but we didn't. But it's actuals versus projection. And we're currently at 38 employees. I don't see that going up anytime soon, though. So, we should remain at that for the remainder of the year. And tipping fees. So, what we get a lot are questions about our tipping fee. Why are you so high? And I think that's everybody's favorite question. So, I just want to explain our tipping fee compared to others. So, we are a transfer station. We are not a landfill. They are two different models. So, we have to take our trash, process it, and transfer it to a landfill. So, we essentially, that, that waste gets handled twice, which means it's going to be double the cost, right? You do two different things with it. It's not as easy as taking your trash somewhere and getting it put in the landfill right away. So, when I am just comparing our transfer station fees, I look at King's Waste Recycling Authority for general refuse, right there in that first chart. We're at $75 a ton. Nearest competitors would be Karts, and they're charging $70 a ton. So, not quite that far off. We have Mid Valley Disposal in Kermin. They have a large volume, so they get to charge their customers $40 a ton. And then Mid Valley in Fresno, $55. Carousel Recycling, I have a $0 per ton charge. And then Pinya's Disposal over in Tulare County, $38 a ton. And then recyclables, we are at $11 a ton for our member agencies. Karts wasn't charging anything, but are now going back and renegotiating contracts to begin charging because the recycling market has crashed. Everybody's had to go back and reevaluate their model. Mid Valley's looking at $20 as well, and Carousel's looking at $20. And I am not sure that any of them have implemented them yet, but those were the last numbers that I had. So, all very similar numbers between the groups. So, landfill, now that we have the transfer station cost out of the way, we have the landfill fees. So, as part of our transfer station cost, or transportation, $75 per ton, we have the landfill per ton. So, what do we pay the landfill? So, we pay the landfill $28.98 a ton. Okay. So, that's the number that we compare. When you're comparing our landfill or our rates to another landfill, that's a number we want to look at because that's a fair comparison. That's apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. So, American Avenue landfill in Fresno is at $24.23 a ton. Vicelia landfill is $34 a ton. And that is the posted gate rate, let me be clear. There may be negotiated rates that I'm not privy to. And Fairmead landfill, $46 a ton. Avenal, $44 a ton. Chaffter-Wosco, $45 a ton. So, then we'll talk about our historic refuse tipping fee. So, King's Waste actually hasn't had a large history of increasing our tipping fee. In 1993, our tipping fee was $45 a ton, and that was to cover MRF transfer station and compost facility construction. In 1995, it was 58, same reason. 1999, it was decreased because our activities, we weren't constructing anything at that time, so costs could go down. And then it was increased two years later to $67 a ton, and that was due to the implementation of AB 939. So, we had to start recycling and having recycling programs, and with that came additional costs to run those programs. In 2002, again, just more increases, more requirements by the state. We increased to $70 a ton. And then our last increase was in 2009 to $75 a ton, and that was just for transfer, the transfer station and disposal costs. We have not had an increase since 2009. And recyclables. 1997, we charged $60 a ton. 98, $46. 99, $45. Dropped a dollar. And in 2009, we are charging all of our member agencies $11.25 per ton. So, we can talk a little bit more about what that $75 covers. So, we've talked a little bit about disposal and transportation. So, our transportation is $12.95 a ton. So, that combined with our landfill disposal costs, we're at roughly $40 a ton. That goes up twice a year depending on the gas prices, right? Our transportation increases. Our household hazardous waste program runs us about $1.94 a ton. Again, free, free program for customers, but we still have to pay for it, right? Free to, free to them, not to us. Oil is about 4 cents a ton. E-waste, e-waste, 8 cents a ton. Sharps, $36, or 36 cents a ton. And then our, one of our biggest unfunded costs is the landfill legacy costs. So, those landfills that we have to take care of. So, about $4.85 a ton. Salary, $7.65 a ton. And our maintenance and equipment costs, $7.91 a ton. Our MRF costs. So, we are subsidizing essentially our MRF or recycling operations with our transfer station tipping fee. That is $12.67 a ton. Our construction, demolition debris program is being subsidized, or is costing us additional 54 cents a ton. It would be a lot more. We just are, we have just had to renegotiate. So, we pay our contractor $42 a ton for them to process our construction and demolition debris. Our latest bid for that is $75 a ton. So, that will also go up as well as we move forward with that. We do have a program that has a surplus currently, and that is our wood and green waste program at $3.65. So, when you add those all together, we're at $72.39 a ton, and the remainder goes to reserves. Okay. So, where are we at with King's Waste? So, we brought in consultants in April 2018 to evaluate our system. They were charged with doing a cost-of-service study for our four main business lines, or lines of business, which would be our MRF transfer station, roll-off program, and landfill legacy cost. They did a MRF evaluation and performa recommendations. And then they will also do a 10-year financial plan and five-year race, rate adjustment plan for us. That part is currently on hold until we decide which direction we're going as the JPA moves forward and the transfer station moves forward. So, what I want to bring to your attention is that there is no immediate emergency on King's Waste's side. We are not in any financial emergency or operational emergency. We're evaluating our system because of the needs of the cities to reduce rates, right? So, we've been asked to evaluate our system to reduce the cost to your constituents. So, that is why we are here talking to you and working through our system. We have a useful life of our MRF equipment, two, three to five years, according to the consultants, according to staff, the people who work it every day. They think they can manage that for another five to eight years. And they've kept that equipment as original to the facility, so I'm going to go with somewhere, you know, happy medium in there. And then we are here because there was poor planning. Nobody planned for, you know, we didn't plan for the recession. We didn't plan for the market to crash the way we did. Nobody actually saw it coming. There were warnings and warnings and warnings from China, but they didn't act, didn't act, didn't act, and then they did. And so, nobody really planned for this. Okay. So, in that cost-of-service study, as I said, our consultant went over four of our business lines, the material recovery facility. I'm just going to direct you to one of the, to the bottom lines where you see our percentage numbers and our revenues surplus or shortfall. So, our MRF shortfall is $1.2 million a year. We currently charge $11.25 a ton. In order to make that program self-sufficient and sustainable, we would need a 154% increase in that program. So, it would go from $11.25 to $1.75.72. For our transfer station programs, we are at a surplus of 32%. So, we could decrease our program by 32%, so from $75 to $50, or $51 a ton. And then with our green waste, we could go from $40 a ton to $26.95 a ton. Our roll-off program, we're operating at a 38% deficit. And then with our landfill post-closure maintenance, we have zero, no percentage there because that is a 100% non-funded activity at all. So, that all comes from the general refuse tipping fee. So, what does that mean? So, if we take all of these free, free to, free to resident programs with our landfill legacy costs, stop subsidizing the material recovery facility with the transfer station, station costs, we could essentially be at a $60 per ton transfer station fee. We're currently at $75. So, the performance that we're looked at from our consultants were to determine the cost of service of the material recovery facility should we choose one of the four performas. Performa 1 is our current situation. This is done by a, an industry person, and so he says our cost of service, or our tipping fee based on how many employees we have, would be $226 a ton. Performa 2 is an upgrade to the facility of $4.5 million. We put that money in. This includes all debt services. He says that our, so it would be same tonnage a year, which is about 7,000 tons of throughput, $116.96 a ton. Performa 3 would be same $4.5 million upgrade with doubling our tonnage. That would come in at 1997. That is the best option for us. We ought to find double the tonnage, so it's a little bit of a challenge for us. And then Performa 4 would be the outsourced processing of recyclable materials, so third-party processing, which would mean that all of the cities and the county haulers would bring their recyclables to us as a collection point, and we would transfer that material out to a private entity to process. And that would be $53 a ton. Okay. And then these are the staffing implications of each of those performas. So, the current option, no staff reductions would be needed. Performa 2, which is the same tonnage that would come through, would be a 10.75. I'm going to have to take off some arms and legs, but their bodies can stay. And the same for Performa 3. So, those are the same exact upgrade, just remember different tonnage. So, same amount of people are needed, and that's pretty consistent in the waste industry. You generally don't add very many people if the tonnage goes up unless you're adding an additional shift. And then at Performa 4 would be a 26.25 reduction in staff. Remember, we only have 38 employees, so that doesn't leave us with very many to operate the transfer station. Okay. So, what are our next steps? So, that is written totally wrong in that first line. So, that, our next steps are that we have just finished a waste composition study, and that waste composition study was used for an RFP to put out to private entities for the, that Performa 4 that we talked about, which is the third-party processing of recyclables. So, that was issued about two weeks ago. And our, the proposals are due on December 28th. And so, once we get those proposals in, we will vet it with our consultant, and then the consultant will make a recommendation to our technical advisory committee, and they would then make that recommendation to the- And they would then make that recommendation to the, um, board. The board then has a choice to accept those or ask us to go out and find some other solutions. Uh, then after that is done, we can then go in and develop our, our ten-year financial plan and, um, and five-year budget. Essentially, we would need to include depreciation, capital improvements, and fleet replacement in all of those plans. And that should be it. I'm so sorry that that took so long. Any questions?
Questions?
I had a, a couple of questions for you. Um, my first initial reaction to some of your projections are, it's amazing. I, I don't know if much of you caught what the CalPERS, um, what that meant when she said was eighty, eighty percent coverage. Um, and what that basically means is if all of the employees, for example, had to, everything folded in today, how much of the retirement, how much of everything that they've earned, they would get right now, today, is eighty percent. And most public entities over like the cities when you're talking, uh, a really good number to attain is above a seventy percent threshold. They, you start to get a little worried when it dips below that, but even seventy-five is considered pretty good. Eighty percent is a pretty phenomenal number, um, as far as we know that, you know, the cost of employing is one of the highest costs in running a business. And to see that your employees are well-funded and taken care of in that regard. And that just means that over time, the money that's in your stocks and your mutual funds will continue to climb. So it's not like you're going to cash it all right now anyway. But that, that's just an indication of how well-run things are going. So I just wanted to stop and point that out real quick. The, um, the only other, um, then concern I have is if, if we were to say, for example, cut back down on employees, not right away, but over time anticipating, that's one of the costs that you were anticipating that could actually lower our costs, cutting the staffing number percentage-wise, with, um, an increase of, for example, um, the machinery that you have out there, making it to where you, you don't need as many employees to be as productive. What are your plans as far as the future to do such a thing? Because, um, I don't see that here, so.
Yeah, so that's where we're at right now, is we're trying to decide what we're going to do. Um, and that's what I think has been charged with all of the city councils from our, the representatives that sit on our board, is to, um, make those recommendations and decide where we're going with it. Um, so we're, you know, if we do an upgrade, then we would reduce the staff, but without doing the upgrade, um, the equipment would essentially go to failure. I'm sorry, I got a bit distracted, so I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I think so. I just wanted to know, is that the plan overall? Not that you, I need to know the nuts and bolts, but is the overall objective to somehow save money by reducing staff, but slowly as the machinery gets updated?
At this point, there is no plan. We're developing one. I would very much like the plan to be that if we have to go for third-party processing, that we continue to try to secure tonnage to do an upgrade in a feasible amount of time. Our RFP proposes a, essentially a three, uh, three-year agreement with two options of two years to extend. So typically, it takes about sixteen months to get an, a MRF upgraded. So that would give us time to go out for proposals, secure tonnage, and hopefully create that after that amount of time. Yeah.
You stated earlier that you, and just, uh, um, stated earlier about outstanding bond. You said you had one outstanding bond, is that correct?
We don't, no. All of our bonds have been paid off.
So you got zero bonds?
Zero bonds.
Um, let's see. That was it. Everything else is pretty well clear. Thank you.
Yes, sir. What does, uh, how do, how do you guys fulfill the need on the landfills? What do you guys have to do? What are the qualifications that you guys have to check?
So we monitor groundwater, um, contamin, any potential ground, we monitor the groundwater for potential contamination, um, and various VOCs, the same for the air and the soil. Um, in addition to that, we have several remediation programs. So we're producing too much methane. We flare some of that methane off at one of our landfills. Um, at another one of our sites, we have, uh, historic groundwater contamination, and so we're going through a remediation project there. Multiple well drilling projects will be coming within the coming years to replace dry wells.
Okay. If I may, you say you guys are a transfer station, not a land station. For instance, if another company came and gave half that price, which you guys are, uh, charging cities like Lemoore, Hanford, Carrington, and some of the cities, we already know I'm on the board, that they're trying to, some of the cities are, one of the cities is trying to get out right now what we're going through right now because we're trying to save money. And, and in the, in the community, if we can get a cheaper price, cheaper rate, um, I'm just saying, we had a meeting in Hanford, how many months ago was that, that, uh?
August.
That was August.
It was in August. What was that pertaining to?
That was this exact, that was a longer, but this exact presentation.
Correct.
Yep.
And, um, in that presentation, we were talking about maybe laying off some people, uh, at your site.
Sure. So again, that was, um, so let's talk about sort of why I'm here. So we gave that presentation in August, um, to, it was supposed to be all, all representatives from the city, from the city councils and the county. So all of our JPA members in one room to hear this presentation from myself and the consultant. Um, so it was the same one, uh, so same layup, potential layoffs that we discussed, um, in here on the like third to last slide, I believe. Um, so, uh, depending on the performa that we go forward with, there would be potential layoffs. Um, if we outsourced, obviously that's going to have a bigger impact to us than if we upgraded our facility because we'll still need people to process some of the material. Machines can't do it all. Um, but if we outsource, obviously there's a whole line of people that won't, uh, have jobs anymore. And if I may say, there are great jobs in our community, um, good paying jobs with retirement that, um, these people, um, that do these jobs are, a lot of them came from the displaced farm worker program. So they've been with us for over twenty years, um, and the likelihood that they will be able to go out and get a job that is comparable to the one that they have now is, is, uh, pretty unrealistic. Um, so it's very impactful to the communities that they live in, um, so just keep that in mind.
I ain't gonna bother you, this is the last question.
Okay.
Now, if we're going to, if, if, if you guys are picking up our trash and we're going to Hanford, you're charging us to go to Hanford, and then you're charging us to go to Kalamazoo City, is that how it's going?
Uh, yeah, so.
A double charge?
It, uh, we're not double charging you, it's, I mean, it's included in the rate, but you are paying for what is happening at our facility, for to come through the gate, to go to our, um, push pit, to get pushed into a transfer truck and taken up to the landfill.
Okay.
That is, and then the landfill disposal costs. And then the Board of Equalization tax.
That's why the cost is what it is.
It is, correct.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Okay, I just have one last question then. Just going forward, I love the presentation, and I really, I, I love that you are thinking of your employees first. I'm just curious, what plan going forward you have or what vision you have for the city to partner? And, and like, when you come here, you obviously have an expectation of, from what you want to see from the city. What is that expectation?
Sure. So, uh, for King's Waste and Recycling Authority, we, we do multiple functions, right? So we have the transfer station, we have the MRF, but we're also the joint powers authority in, um, in our mandates to meet the diversion requirements through the state. So we partner with the cities to help you meet those mandates. As it's stated through the state right now, individually, none of our jurisdictions could meet those mandates themselves. Now, there has been this position of municipalities, I came from one, so I know before this job, that what is CalRecycle gonna do if we don't meet the requirement? And I will tell you that they didn't do anything before. They threatened to give you a ten thousand dollar fine a day, uh, until you became, until you came into compliance. But you have to be really, 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 really high on the naughty list to actually get that enforcement action. But I do believe tomorrow, CalRecycle is meeting to ask for the permission to begin enforcing that ten thousand dollars per day. So, uh, we've had a heck of a week at our site, so I haven't gone through to read the multi-million dollar page agenda packet that they're putting forward. I think it's tomorrow, if it's not, it's January eighteenth. So it is, uh, quite impactful when you're considering either withdrawing from the JPA or changing the operations and putting the control, uh, taking the control out of our hands. Because if we do go, um, to private sector processing, we're giving all of the control away except for having a contract. So right now, we are the masters of our domain. You've seen that everybody else is going to have an increase, right? Because of the market, but we haven't, and we don't plan on that because we've been able to sustain, we've been able to get rid of our material. Now forty dollars a ton is nothing, but there, most of these private sector have, have stopped pulling their paper. So the only way they're going to begin pulling the paper again is if you give them an increase. So I caution, um, all the city councils and the boards that are making these decisions to know that we are in a bit of a, um, in a bit of a predicament with the recycling industry where the state is now putting more enforcement action. And, uh, King's Waste is just here to help all of you cities comply and to make sure we have sustainable programs, so.
So you're saying that these private entities aren't doing what they would need to start doing if the state starts to crack down, and you're already doing that and charging us for that? Is that correct?
I, yes. And we, so if they have stopped pulling or have threatened to stop pulling unless they increase their fees, so right now they're maybe receiving some additional funds for those recyclables. And so they're going from receiving monies to now being charged per ton. And I can't speak for every entity out there. I'm just gonna speak from, um, public sector, twelve-year knowledge of these processes, if that's fair enough.
I, I'd like to go back to something you just stated, uh, and it, because it's important, it's relevant, what the JPA actually is and going forward. Because what you're essentially saying, it's sort of like we run as our own small business. Uh, it's not that it's, um, private, it's being operated with these public entities, but it's sort of like, we don't have to follow everything that's being dict out, or dictated from Mount High, from Sacramento. We have our own JPA established. If that goes away, there is no mechanism to get it back. Like, once it's gone, it's gone. And the only concern I have going forward, I love the idea of like having, um, local control, especially in something like this, but we don't have the majority vote, um, if we go forward and we have to maintain sort of the majority threshold. Because part of those partners in the JPA, being the county, are no longer part of the JPA, yet they still have a vote on the board. So as an entity, Lemoore, we're at, uh, we kind of got one hand behind our back. We can't really be masters of our own domain if we don't have a proportionate amount of votes to how much we have to put in.
Sure, sure. Um, you know, that, that question's been given to me several times on the representation on our Board of Directors, um, but I will say that I, I believe that it's because of, um, the amount of land, I've been told several things, um, the amount of land that is in the unincorporated area, uh, not necessarily population, as well as what, uh, each one of the entities brought into the JPA when it was established, which was, um, so those additional landfills and the monies that were in the reserves for those landfills. So your concerns are definitely heard and there, um, you know, should, uh, any one of the council members want to add to our agenda, to look at the organization of our board, it's something that we could very well do. Um, but the county is a part of the JPA, they are complying, and just as everybody else has been, um, working through some of these recycling programs with the state, the county is as, as well, and we're currently working on increasing their programs. So they will, um, continue to be a good partner and player in, in the game, I should say, of trash.
So can we actually ask to do that right now, or do we have to wait until council comments to ask to create a consensus, to ask to go forward looking at our representation on that board?
Yeah, you can't take action on a study session item, so council comment would be a more appropriate place to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I think that's it.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Okay, we'll move on to study session item number two, which is Economic Development Committee.
Okay. Good evening again, Mayor and council members. So once again, I'm standing in for Michelle on this one. So on October sixteenth, um, the council gave consensus for staff to bring forth information on creating an ad hoc committee for economic development. So the city looked at ad hoc committees, we looked at a standing committee and as well as some other options. Um, with an ad hoc committee, uh, we can do that at the direction of council. It would be a four-member, uh, committee that we would, uh, myself and the city attorney would bring forth to the mayor for potential people to serve on the committee. Two council members could also sit in on the committee, but then they would be the only two that would be allowed to participate, obviously, for various Brown Act reasons. Um, the ad hoc committee is normally expires automatically after a one-year period, and it has to have a specific, specific reason that would be developed and given. So, you know, this ad hoc committee will meet four times over the next twelve months to whatever we develop that you want them to do. So that's one way of doing it. The other way is a standing committee, which like we have with Parks and Rec and the downtown, the DMA and whatnot, which would have a hiring pro, or a, an application process that would be open for thirty days. People could apply, they'd go to the mayor for, uh, a seat on that committee. That committee would then be subject to the various rules, and you'd have to have quorums for those, those meetings to take place, which has been a problem, some in some of our other standing committees is getting a quorum. And then the other option we could do would just be to have open community roundtables that we could advertise at the high school level, the community level, the college level, and just have targeted, specific meetings to invite people to come out and talk about economic development, kind of brainstorming sessions that staff then could come back to council and present. So those are kind of the, the three options. Staff, staff would recommend and is asking that we would just do community roundtables. That allows for a lot more people to have a say, um, and then report out on, on what those meetings have. So this is in for, this is information only. Um, so we brought it back to you. Our recommendation would be to do it in a, in a, basically a community roundtable meetings specific to economic development.
Questions or suggestions?
Will you be able to? Uh, the only thing I ask is that, well, can we set aside one of the meeting, uh, times or the roundtables to be at either a place where young folks go or can be advertised in like the high schools and the colleges locally? Perhaps maybe even working with the Chamber, they used to run a young entrepreneurs program. They know how to reach out to the youth and get them involved. Um, I'd like to suggest partnering with them, or at least talking with them, how they were able to accomplish that involvement so that we can see that as well.
Yeah, the, the purpose of this would be to get input from, you know, everybody, you know, up and, up-and-comers that aren't paying a mortgage yet, but will be in the next couple of years versus to those that are retired in our community and everybody in between.
Anything else? All right, then we'll go ahead and conclude this study session. We'll go ahead and, uh, close the meeting, and we'll start our regular meeting at seven thirty, about ten minutes. There it goes, okay. Lemoore City Council, December eighteenth, regular meeting. Go ahead and stand up and, uh, do the pledge of allegiance. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, Pastor James Jones.
As we bow our heads, Lord, we thank you for this great council tonight. And Lord, we ask Lord that you would bless them with your best blessings. We ask Lord that you remember their families, remember their homes, remember their jobs, and all these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blair?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Tedister?
Here.
Mayor Protemnail?
Here.
Mayor Madravol?
Here.
We have established a quorum, we can conduct the city's business. At this time, I'll ask the council, are there any, um, additions and or deletions to the Seeing none, the agenda will be approved as written. Public comment, we have opportunity for public comment at this time. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? would like to make public comment? This time is reserved for items that are not on the agenda, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone wish to make public comment? Mr. Ed Rogers?
I would like to take a few minutes to talk about communications, transparency, and integrity between the voters of Lamoore and our city council members. It's my opinion, 80% of the council understands these words. However, one of you think you can do what you like, when you like, and the bottom line is, you do it for you, not the voters. Councilmember Blair, you remind me of a song from the 1960s sang by the Stone Ponies, "Different Drum." You truly march the beat of a different drum. The problem is, you're the only member of your band. The only communications you do are intertwined with email and social media. Almost every council meeting, you preach the need for transparency, but don't seem to use it. Then there's integrity, doing the right thing when no one is listening or watching. With that said, let me share with everyone here tonight how you feel, really feel, and work when the voters aren't looking. Two weeks ago, during the last council meeting, you made no mention of attending meetings in Sacramento. Instead of waiting till next council meeting to ask the question, I decided to send you a one-on-one email for this answer. At this time, I would like to read the email to the public, because you refused to answer my email that I sent you to sitting twice. Let me introduce myself, this, I'm gonna read the email, word perbatim. Let me introduce myself. If you didn't already know, I'm the old guy that sits in the front row at every council meeting. I'm trying a different way to ask our council members a question, if the question only pertains to a specific council member. No need to ask the question in public, sitting, when we could talk one-on-one. There again, you don't wanna talk one-on-one. At the end of the council meeting last night, I noticed you never made mention of your trip to Sacramento a couple of weeks ago, it was around November 18th. By way of social media, I see you attended Latino and the African-American caucus meeting. Is there a reason you never made mention of the two meetings last night during your report? Did you go as a Lamoore council member, or as a citizen of Lamoore? Also, aren't you censored from attending these types of meetings? As a voter and a citizen of Lamoore, I feel I have a right to know what our elected officials are doing. Transparency. Looking forward to hearing back from you. Thanks, Ed Rogers, 559-367-3370. Still ain't heard back. So, at this time, are you going to be transparent, or just sit there?
May I please respond? Because normally, council members do not respond to the rants of the public, so may I respond?
Would you like her to?
Fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I do appreciate that you have the audacity to assume that you somehow get to know more information than the general public. As you pointed out, it's on my social media page, which is public, which means I let you know exactly what I care to share with the public in my private life. The sensor had nothing to do with my private life, and you say I met with the Latino and African-American caucus as if it was one, some monolith that didn't exist in different organizations. The League of Cities has different caucuses, for example, the Democratic Party has caucuses, for example. I wasn't even in Sacramento, that's how little you actually know of what's going on around here, and I really just didn't feel like wasting my time with somebody who clearly had no idea what they were talking about. And it was my private life, in which you have no reason to know anything more than anyone else in the public, which I've already given more than enough information by choice, because I wanted to let them know where I was at. I have friends who follow. But you don't get to know more than that, it has nothing to do with you. I don't, I don't, I don't get who you think you are, that you can just email people, just because I'm sitting up here to represent the community.
That's enough, thank you.
Okay, so I'm allowed to speak as much as, until it gets a little real for people here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Willie Olivera?
We're not having a back and forth.
No.
No back and forth, sorry.
No, no, I just wanna finish reading my email.
That was the end of your email. The last word was transparency in your email.
So you're telling me I can't read the rest of my email?
Are we really gonna have a back and forth in this?
Can we?
Are we done?
Point of order, once again.
Would, would you guys like to hear the rest of his email?
I was responding to something you said, we're done.
That's the question.
I want a consensus of council, if we wanna, and then it should go through.
Okay, would you guys like to hear the rest of his email?
It's only two sentences.
Oh, of course, why not? He already did what he was talking about.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
And by the way, recall Holly Blair didn't fail. Instead, I take a quote from history. You've awakened a sleeping giant, stand by election 2018.
Okay, so the recall attempt that they made has failed everyone. They didn't get enough signatures before the deadline, it's dead, you can stop bringing it up as some sort of threat now.
Ms. Blair, it's not serious. Okay. Willie Olivera, can you talk that?
Thanks, Ray, for letting me follow that, but welcome, thank you for welcoming me. Hello, council, city of Lamoore. I'm here to represent the PAL program, the Police Activities League, and I just wanna publicly thank Mr. Darrell Chief Smith for the work he's done for our, for our program. And I wanna ask you and anybody in the city, if there's any kids that need mentoring or want to join our program, please help us in this act, okay? It's a wonderful, wonderful league we have. We are wrestlers, but our priority is creating young leaders, women and men, okay? That's our priority. I don't care if you can wrestle or not, we're bringing them in there to mentor them, to be first and foremost, to be polite to their parents, their teachers, their leaders in the community. That's what the PAL program is for. So I really wanna thank Henry Campos, Louis Perla, and Dustin Rocha for helping out coaching.
There's Henry behind you.
It's easy for me to volunteer, 'cause I have a son that's a wrestler, but they have no skin in the game, they're doing that all on their own, so I really wanna thank them too. And Chief Smith, thank you very much. That's what I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't have any other cards, but if you would like to come up?
Connie Willashen, 523 C Street, in Lamoore. My question is, why is the camera over there instead of over here where it used to be? Because when I was watching it this afternoon, I can't see your faces, we can't see your facial expressions, and we need, especially after that exchange just now, that needs to be on Facebook, because when you're way over there, we can't see your faces, we can't see, and that's very important, to read your facial expressions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to department and city manager reports.
So good evening, Mayor and council members. With the anticipation of tonight's festivities, we only have one report, and that's mine. I'd like to thank the Public Works Department, we had a main waterline break over on Iona, that they're still, they're still on, actually, they need to do some backfill, and the road's partially open tonight. But we had 36 residents without water for probably about 14 hours yesterday. I could tell you, I drove by there last night, the guys were down in the pit, ankle-deep in water, still in their t-shirts, 'cause they've been out there all day. These guys really, really went above and beyond getting this thing up and going. I know it's an inconvenience for those 36 that live over in that neighborhood. Ground settled, the pipe acts, 18-inch mainline pulled out of its T, so complete separation of a line, big repair, but the guys got on it, monitored it, and again, they just, they did an outstanding job. We apologize for the inconvenience, and we should have, there's a boil water order for those 36 homes that should be lifted tomorrow, pending good results from the state that we're pulling, so we'll get that out to you as soon as we can. But again, I wanted to thank our, our Public Works guys for, for responding, they did an outstanding job. And then I'd like to thank the outgoing Mayor Madrigal and Councilmember Chedester, thank you for your service to the, to the city of Lamoore. On behalf of myself and staff, we, we thank you for the support and for the betterment of the city. God bless you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, we will go ahead, is there anyone else? That's it. I will go ahead and move to the consent calendar. We have two items, approval of minutes, regular meeting, November 6, 2018, and 3-2, which is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, December 4th of 2018. Would you like to have any of those pulled, or can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. Neal, and a second by Mr. Brown to approve the consent calendar. All those, Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Consent calendar is passed, thank you. We'll move to, we have no public hearings, we'll go to item 5-1, Elections Business, Section 5. That's approve the canvas of the November 6, 2018 election, Resolution 201851.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. What I have before you is the resolution to approve, Resolution 201851, which approves the official canvas and certification of election results by the county clerk for the November 6, 2018 election. That is the official result of the election itself, asking your approval.
Make the motion to.
If I may, I'm looking at this, the date, on here, it's the wrong date, it has December 6, when it's December 18. Right. December 6, 2018.
The election was actually certified by Kings County on December 6.
Okay. But it's November, what, today, day 18?
Today is the council meeting for December 18.
Today, okay, okay, thank you.
Steph, what he's referencing is that the date on the staff report is November 26th.
Correct.
2018, it should be December 18th.
Correct.
2018, oh, you wrote it.
I actually wrote it on that date.
In November, okay.
Anticipating it was going to be going to December 4.
And the meeting, yes, and the meeting date wasn't changed from December 6th, so it, it is a correction in the staff report.
Thank you.
That was good catch.
You're welcome.
So can we have a motion to approve this item?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Is the motion for the amendment, for the correction, will be corrected?
The motion is actually to approve the resolution.
Yeah, it's just the resolution that's being approved, we've made a note for the record in case this issue comes up in the past, that this occurred at the meeting of December 18th.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Neal, and a second by Mr. Brown to approve this item. Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The item is approved. We will now move on to item 5-2, Recognition of Outgoing Council Members, Chedester and myself. Skirson.
If I can have, please have Mayor Madrigal and Councilmember Chedester step down, please. I'd like to present you.
So again, Jeff from the city of Lamoore, thank you for your service to the community. Jeff Chedester, council member, 11, 2014 to 12, 2018. Thank you. Mr. Madrigal? Same thing, thank you for your service to the community. Ray Madrigal, council member from 8, 14 to 12, 2016, and the mayor from 12, 2016 to 12, 2018. Thank you. Good luck.
I'm teasing him.
Your cookies, man.
We need to announce, transition to new council. Okay. We're gonna do trans- transition to the new council right now, Section 6. 6-1, Administration of Vote of Office, newly elected council members, Mrs. Vanegas.
If I could have, please have Stuart Lyons and Chad Billingsley approach. Now, please have you go onto one side, go on one side, you'll raise your right hand. I will say everything, at the very end, you will say, "I do," hopefully. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. So now, if I could please have you take a seat of the recently vacated council members, item 1, and then we will move on to the next item.
All right.
and Mayor Pro Tem. Mrs. Vanegas?
Now that the new council is seated, is it time for the reorganization of the council, the election of the mayor, and the mayor pro tem? While Lamoore's municipal code is silent on the election of the mayor and mayor pro tem, the city's practice has been to hold an election of the mayor and mayor pro tem among the council members every two years. I will chair the reorganization process. I will call for nominations for mayor. Any council member may nominate another council member, or himself, herself. When there are no further nominations, I will close the nominations and call for a motion to approve a nominee. If there is more than one nomination, a vote will take, be taken in last-name alphabetical order. A council member may make a motion to approve any of the nominees. If the motion fails, a council member may make a motion to approve a different nominee. Upon a second, a majority vote of the council, a nominee shall become the mayor. The same process is followed for the position of mayor pro tem. Any questions? I will now open nominations for mayor.
I'd like to nominate Eddie Neal.
Are there any other nominations?
No, but I just wanted to point out that I had not only posted this on social media, I had personally requested to both of our new incoming council members as a point of courtesy, if I would please be allowed the honor of nominating Eddie. And as you can see, we're getting off to a bangin' start, so I just wanted to point that out. Again, transparency, right?
You're welcome to second.
Oh, I know. I'm always welcome second.
If there are no further nominations, I will close the nominations. We need now a motion to appoint Eddie Neal as mayor. Do I have a motion? Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Eddie Neal as mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Blair, seconded by Councilmember Lyons, to appoint Eddie Neal as Mel. He is a Mel, now we don't.
Come on now.
I will take a roll call vote, and I will be going from my left to the right. Councilmember Blair?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Billingsley?
Yes.
Councilmember. Councilmember Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Your new mayor is Eddie Neal. I will now open nominations for mayor pro tem.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Stuart Lyons, mayor pro tem.
I'd like to nominate myself. I know that I will not receive a second, but seeing as how I've been here longer, I received more votes than either one of you, the recall effort completely failed, and as of today, I am the only council member who's actually managed to make relations with communities outside of our immediate city boundaries. So I'd really like an opportunity to present that before, you know, they've even had their first closed session. But, okay.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Chad Billingsley.
If there are no further nominations, I will close nomination period, and because there are more than one, I will go in last name alphabetical order. I need a motion to appoint Chad Billingsley as mayor pro tem. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to nominate Chad Billingsley as mayor pro tem.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brown, a second by Mayor Neal, to appoint Chad Billingsley as mayor pro tem. I will now take a roll call vote, again, left to right. Councilmember Blair?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Billingsley?
Yes.
Mayor Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lyons?
Yes.
Your new mayor pro tem is Chad Billingsley. We're going to do a reorganization at the moment, so if I could have your stand.
We're at new business now. Yes, sir.
All right, new businesses. Section seven. Seven dash one, Reporting and Recommendations, City Council Meeting Schedule for the 2019 calendar year, Resolution 2018-52. Spear?
Assistant City Manager Spear is unavailable tonight, so I will be taking this one. I feel like I've been up here quite a bit. The item before you is the City Council Meeting Schedule for the 2019 calendar year, which is Resolution 2018-52. What this is, is to actually set the schedule for next year's council meetings. Staff is recommending the cancellation of one meeting, and that would be the, in order to accommodate the Fourth of July holiday, which would be July 2nd. That is the only recommendation to council. If there's any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve item seven dash one.
I'll second.
Councilmember Holly Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Billingsley? I mean, who was it that said that?
Chair Brown, Councilmember Brown.
Councilmember Brown, sorry.
Who's second to motion? Oh, I second it, sorry.
That's correct. Mayor Pro Tem, Billingsley?
Aye.
Councilmember Stuart Lyons?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor Neal, you need to make a vote.
I said aye. No, it's okay. Seven dash two, Reporting and Recommendations, Denial of Claim of Miss Laura Dunin. Go ahead, Ms. Venegas.
Good evening again, Mayor, council members. I am before you in order to present the, asking you to approve the denial of a claim for Miss Laura Dunin. The City of Lemoore received a claim from Miss Dunin on November 7, 2018, for an incident that occurred on September 17, 2018. The claim was returned insufficient, an amendment claim was received on November 30, 2018. Miss Dunin claims injury from falling at the end of a slide ride that she believes was too high from the ground. The city submitted the claim to our third-party administrator, which is the Acclimation Insurance Management Services, or AIMS for short. They have concluded their investigation, and they are recommending the city reject the claim, thereby starting the six-month statute of limitations deadline. Any questions?
Can we expound this?
Yeah, so it's new business you can talk about.
Okay. With this injury, I was reading over it and was talking about, you guys did a video and covered up the hole, or?
Go ahead. It's, I would ask council to, because this is a potential litigation item, if you have questions, you have some options, we could discuss it in depth in closed session at the next meeting. Or if you have questions that are a part of the claim, and stuff that's already public information, then that's okay. But if they're, go outside of what's in the packet, I would probably recommend a closed session item on this.
Okay, is this, is this, is this closed session what I just presented? Can somebody else get this and read it and see what I just read?
Yes, yes, that's public.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay. Go ahead.
I apologize. Could you please ask the question again?
I don't think I'm going to ask that question again. But anyway, okay. I know we're under litigations with this right here, this claim.
Potential.
Potential. How does it look for us, attorney?
Counsel, I can obviously respond to that comment, however, it would be a privileged comment that I would be responding to, and so if you do have those kinds of questions, I would recommend that we table this item and schedule it for closed session at the next meeting.
I would like to table it.
We don't want to table that. We want to vote on the item.
No, if they want, no. Yes.
We would need a motion in a second.
We need a motion in a second if you want to table it, yes.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Pro tem. Pro tem mayor. Billingsley? I keep forgetting. Councilman Stuart Lyons. Could I get a aye? From Pro tem? Stuart Lyons? Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Holly Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, let's go to. Seven dash three, Reporting and Recommendations, Fiscal Year 2018-19 Mid-Year Budget Amendment for Fleet Maintenance. I'm going to say, what's your first name? Linda?
Linda.
Until I get your name right, I ain't going to say it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Linda Byersdorf, and I am the management analyst for the city. I'm bringing before you tonight a mid-year budget amendment for the Fleet Maintenance Department. I have listed in there, in the table showing for fuel, we had actually done $157,000 in 1617. Last year, we did $220,000, and that increase was due to, we added several trucks, one for the utilities manager, one for refuse. This year, water has added a Chevy Colorado. We also started the streets department, and they are using two vehicles that currently weren't in use. And the Proteus workers that have been helping us out, they've also been using vehicles. So that kind of accounts for that increase. This year, it was budgeted for $150,000. We're on track to spend about $260,000, so we're requesting a $110 increase in that budget. For the CNG fuel, several of our refuse trucks and the street sweeper use the CNG fuel. That one in 2016-17 did $52,000. Last year, it did $55,000. It was budgeted at $35,000, but we're looking to increase it, and actually, this has a change, it'll actually be increased to $57,000 instead of the $67,000. We spoke with the auditor today, and there was $10,000 that was paid out of this year that was actually for last year, and we are able to move that, so that'll save us that $10,000. So the updated amount would be $57,000, which would be a $22,000 increase. And I've adjusted the budget amendment that Janie has to show that $10,000 reduction. And then for the repair and maintenance supplies, we averaged about $130,000 over the last two years. $52,000 was budgeted. We're recommending that we put it back up to the $130,000, so that's an increase of $78,000. So we're looking at increasing the budget by $210,000. Currently, that'll put the budget a little over what's currently allocated from the other departments, but they have not done the fleet allocations yet this year. Once they do that, then we'll look at those budgets to make adjustments to cover, because this is an internal service fund, which means it's paid for internally from the departments within the city.
That's a good question, because normally our fiscal, I understand mid-year adjustments, but our fiscal year usually runs from July on through December. So this is really a budget adjustment for about half the fiscal year then, is that right?
It's a mid-year adjustment, yes, because it runs July to June.
Right, so the only reason I point that out is I wanted to ask, of the $210,000 increase, what are your normal operating costs in those categories, because I saw there were different categories, for a six-year, or six-month period? So I can see what a percentage of an increase that is for that service.
Well, when I came up with the $260,000, that would be taking what we have spent, and by that time, we probably only had five months' worth of bills, and so I took that and just increased it out, divided it by five, took it times the seven, and then came up with what a total would be, which is the $260,000.
Okay, so that's how you came up with the number?
Yes, for all of them, they.
For each category?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
And the 4230, the repair maintenance supplies actually is kind of on track to be about $100,000, but that one can vary depending on what supplies are needed. We don't know what might break down, so that's why I went with the 130, which has kind of been the average.
Okay, of that five-minute period that you're?
Yeah, when I looked at the average over five years, it actually has been an average of $170,000 a year we've been spending.
Okay.
But we're hopefully going to stay below that.
Awesome, okay, thank you for that explanation.
If I may, I'm looking at the numbers here. 4220F, Operating Supply Fuel, you had budget 2018, 2019, $150,000. You proposed a budget of $260,000. The difference is $110,000. Then you got on the lowest, the lower level, 4220CNG, Operating Supplies CNG, you have budget of 2018 to 2019, $35,000. And then you have proposed budget, $67,000.
Which actually, no, that's $57,000.
Yeah, but on here it says $67,000.
Yes, because I just found out like at four o'clock.
Okay, that's all that, okay. You answered already.
That was a last-minute fine.
So with the two vehicles that was on idle for a while, that $110,000 for the fleet is not the two vehicles for fueling?
Correct, that's for all, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make clarification of that.
Counsel members, if I, if I may, the, each departmental budget has a line item for fleet expense, which covers the repair of their vehicles and their fuels. The amount of money that was budgeted appropriately at the department level didn't transfer over into the fleet internal account. So some of these funds are actually budgeted in the, in the individual departments, but didn't get rolled up into the in-service account, and that's what Ms. Byersdorf was saying, that it's almost all covered in a budget, but we'll have to do a shore-up on the departmental budgets at a later time with council.
Okay, if I may, any kind of way you guys can make it more clear? More clear? See, you told me that. Instead of telling me like this, you could, I could just see it right on the paper.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Okay. Could I get a motion to?
Public comment?
Okay. Can we get a public comment on this? Anybody want to expound on this? Feel free, personify on this information if you want. None? Okay, going back to the city council. Anybody want to expound on this? Council members? I see there's none. Could I get a motion?
Making motion to approve, seven dash three is written.
Mr. Brown? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Stuart Lyons, second it. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Stuart Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Holly Blair?
No.
Mr. Chad Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, let's go to seven dash four, Reporting and Recommendations, Budget Amendment Fund, O2O, Traffic Safety for Repair and, Repair and Roadways Warning Lights. Linda?
Good evening again. This one is a budget amendment. Fund 020 is traffic safety. That fund is revenue from tickets, parking tickets and such, and can be used for repair of roadways or safety in the pedestrian crossings. As some of you may know, the in-roadway lights at Spruce Avenue and Lemoore Avenue have been out of service. One side is missing a pole. So we are wanting to do a budget amendment to use the monies from Fund 020 and put it into streets to be able to repair those in-roadway lights. And we will be redoing the whole thing. It'll get two new poles, buttons, and all of the lights across the street.
Just for clarification, Fund 020, Traffic Safety, that money was already budgeted, is that correct, for traffic safety? And we're just pulling it from them, from that budget then?
Yes.
That was previously budgeted from our, in our normal budget?
So, yeah, there's, there's a fund with set asides from traffic violations of parking tickets, and then the interest on life investments that goes into Fund O2O. So there is a balance in O2O. There's no expenses budgeted against it for the year. So in order to use those funds, we need to do a budget adjustment and move it into an expenditure account so we can use it.
So my follow-up question to that would be, this is basically for the community to understand, this is the fund that we gather funds for if there's a pullover in town, a traffic violation, and my only concern in tying these funds to budget adjustments would be, there becomes an inclination then to feed that budget with additional revenue sources. And I'm just wondering if there's any mechanism to, to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So Ms. Blair, the, the, the code in the state of California sets aside this account and what you can and cannot use the funds for. It's very specific on what you can and cannot use these funds for, and that's why if you look, there have been zero expenditures out of this account for the last three years. I went back three years to see what we expended, and there has been nothing spent out of this. So this would normally be an item that we would pull out of the streets, general fund account. However, when we were reviewing monies that the city holds, O2O, the traffic safety account, was a good candidate to help pay for this, and those are approved uses and legal uses of this fund.
With all due respect, that wasn't my question at hand. I understand how the monies are being spent. My question is that there becomes an inclination to increase the monies in that fund in the first place by having more basically traffic violations, more tickets that are written, more money that comes in. I'm asking if there's a mechanism in place to prevent, because we're tying this to mid-year adjustments, is there any mechanism to prevent scouting for more additional revenue in that fund? fund, not how it's being spent?
So I would say that, no, there is not a specific mechanism, other than the fact that we have a lot of integrity in our departments that issue these tickets, and they are only for parking violations, I believe, not your general speeding ticket, things of that nature. If you look at the history of this fund over the last few years, we have decreased the revenues in that account every year over the last five years. I believe back five years ago, we had budgeted like almost ten thousand dollars to this account, and this year, I believe, it's only budgeted for forty-three hundred. So historically, we have shown a decline in the amount of revenue going into this account.
So if we started to see a dramatic increase going into that account, we might have a rubric then of saying that we shouldn't expect that then, right? That shouldn't be the expectation.
Not unless people start parking where they shouldn't in excess.
Okay, just wanted to note that, thank you.
And this is also for, this is going to fund a crosswalk that we use for kids in the morning and in the afternoon, so, you know, it's a safety issue. So it's over there on Spruce and Lamore Avenue.
It's our furthest north crosswalk on Eighteenth Avenue.
Yeah. I've had a lot of people complain to me about this.
And a vehicle had knocked us down, didn't it?
Say again?
Was it a vehicle that knocked us down?
Who knows?
I believe so. No, it says it right here.
Well, it may have been a vehicle, I don't know, don't know.
Yeah.
It's what it says.
A vehicle knocked us down, the pole, due to age and lighting crosswalk staff would like to replace this both poles, updated lighting in streets. Far safe haven, that's, yeah, okay. Does public have anything to say about this? Open to the public? I see there's none? Okay, oh. Lift that hand up.
Good evening, council, and Dr. Gail Crum. Question to Mr. Olson, as far as that budget for the traffic safety, is there an expenditure report that the public can see? Or has it been used in the last five years at all?
Yes, you could request that through the city clerk as a public records request. Absolutely. All of our expenditures are available to the public via request.
Has it been used in the past five years? I was just trying to get an understanding.
No, so there's a pot of money that's collected, and then when we find uses for it, I do know, I believe that we buy some equipment, traffic-related equipment for the police cars, and we get new cars would come out of that fund. But when I pulled the expenditures for the last three years today, there was nothing noted for the last three years. And it's very clear on what we can and cannot use those monies for. So one other thing we did, or we anticipate doing this here is part-time crossing guards that are not part of the police department, but part-time employees, you can use these funds to pay the thirty thousand or whatever it is we contract for crossing guard services throughout the year out of this fund as well.
And you're saying the current budget is forty-three hundred right now?
So the revenues, I think the projected revenues, and I'm going off memory from what I saw today, I want to say it was forty-three hundred dollars. It might have been forty-seven hundred, but I'm almost certain it was less than five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Crystal?
Dr. Crystal Jackson, she asked part A of the question. I have part B. Now, you say that it's projected, you say that you can request this outstanding. Do you have that here tonight?
I can pull financials, yes, on my computer.
And you would be able to show this to the public? Because why would the public need to wait or go and request when they're asking right now? And you're saying, well, from five years ago, it was this, and I haven't seen where it has been used? Are we all supposed to just take your word, and it's left up to us to go into the office and ask for a copy of the report? Or can you provide this right now so that we can actually see and verify what is actually in there? And it will better help us understand why she's asking for this amendment?
So the only way I would answer that is, here at the dais, when we're in meetings, it takes me a while to get into the system.
Understandable.
I'm not fluent in pulling these reports. I can get them, takes me a little bit more. So when I say I looked at them earlier, Amanda pulled the report for me. But I don't, if I had to look up every request and get into my computer here at this meeting, I would not be able to participate in the other meeting. So there's a system in place to give that information. I'd be happy to get it out. Once a request is made, it's, we can literally have, we have ten days, I believe, to respond.
Yes.
But it would definitely not take too long. As a matter of fact, there's a copy on my desk, I just didn't bring it. So I'd be happy, I have an open-door policy as well, so if somebody wanted to come down and look at that, I'd be happy to share it with them.
Okay, is this something that can be put into the minutes? Or included, since it's on record and being asked for, that be put into the minutes from tonight's meeting? Since that's something that he has on his desk? So that's...
But is there a budgeted amendment in the file? Because that shows the account balance.
It's attached.
Yeah, it's attached, so it's part of the documents that were posted. So we are asking for twenty thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to be pulled out of account O-two-O, ten-ten, that's a cash account, and we're asking to put it into zero-zero-one, which is a general fund, forty-two-thirty-one, forty-three-ten streets account, in the amount of, the same amount of thirty thousand. It doesn't show the balance to O-two-O though, and it just shows the current balance in forty-two-thirty-one.
Is...
Yeah, and the number, the budget, is online as well, on what was passed by council for all these different cost centers as well.
Okay, so the form that you're looking at is actually already in the agenda that we're looking at?
Yes, it's page, it's page fifty-four of one-thirty-three.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to expound on this? I see there's none, back to the council. Anybody want to expound on this, council? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve seven-four is written.
Mr. Brown?
I'd like to second that motion.
Mr. Billingsley? Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Ms. Holly Blair?
No.
And I vote aye.
Counsel, one correction to the document that's attached on page fifty-four.
Fifty-four, okay.
Yes, the, under the justification for change funding source, there's listed position allocation for refuse driver that should not be included. That is not accurate. It's, the reason for the request is what has been stated here tonight and not what is on the, that's stated on that form.
Let me delete it.
I forgot to mention, the budget amendment she has did correct that error. Thank you.
So will the motion that just carried be adjusted?
I think the motion is just to approve the change of the funds and not necessarily the form. The form can be corrected prior to signature.
Okay. Okay. Seven-dash-five, reporting recommendations approved, quit, claim of section six of memorandum of covenants restrict and easement between the Westlands Water District and SSC, JLLC of California Limit Liability Company, and the acceptance of easement reservation between the City of Lamore and Sandridge Partners LP, a California Limit Partnership Resolution twenty-eighteen fifty-three. Mr. Olson?
So good evening, mayor and council members. What you have before you tonight is a, approve a quit claim and to accept an easement reservation between the City of Lamore and Sandridge Partners. We currently have a section of land, or not, we, but Sandridge Partners owns a section of land that is east of Avonel Cut Off, south of Kent Avenue. It's about thirty-one acres in total, that we have a blanket covenant from two thousand and seven that says, should a future easement be needed, they have to give the city at no cost and at our request an easement through that thirty-one acres. Since that covenant was brought forth in two thousand and seven, Sandridge Partners has entered into agreements with some solar companies, and they want to develop solar on that land. So what they're asking of the city now is to quit claim the generic or overall that'll just give us access through anywhere in that thirty-one acres so they can develop their solar project. And instead, we now have an easement reservation, if we choose to exercise it in the future, that basically specifies the area west of the canal that we currently use to convey wastewater. It gives us an additional ninety feet outside of that if we need any future easements for water conveyance. So this quit claim and acceptance of the pipeline agreement keeps in the spirit of the original two thousand and seven covenant. It meets the needs of them to develop the solar down there, and it meets the needs of the city for any future events.
And counsel, there were some minor revisions to the resolution and the quit claim deed relating to the future interests, and so those have been provided to council, and there's copies for the public here if the public wants them.
Does the public want to expound on this? Anybody?
He wants, she wants a copy.
We'll get it for her.
Anyone? I see there's none, back to the council.
Well, seeing as how this has to do with water conveyance and the importance of that in the future of Lamore, I'd like to table this item so that our new council members have an opportunity to take a look at the contracts more thoroughly, as they've only been given a few moments, and that's not very much time when it's such a serious matter and has to do with the future of our city for a very long time. So that would be my recommendation, but perhaps they are ready to go.
Nathan, are there any disadvantages that you can see?
So from, basically what we currently have is there's thirty-one acres that basically says we have the right to request an easement through that thirty-one acres. It's very generic and broad. All this does is actually assign an easement, and it's in the map in your packet. That gives us an additional ninety feet outside of where we currently convey our wastewater. This gives us an additional ninety feet in case we would, in the future, need a secondary line down there. Not sure if we would need it or when, or if we'll even pull the trigger on this easement, but as of right now, I don't see any reason why we would not move forward. Thank you.
Looking at this on page fifty-six, it says, landowners is obligated to cooperate with the City of Lamore in good faith to develop, impose such easement. Now, talking about good faith here, what happens, I'm asking the attorney?
Mr. Neal, that section you're reading, that is part of the language in the covenant from two thousand and seven in section six.
Okay.
So that is what we're moving away from.
Good deal, okay.
On that one. And then the new easement allows us, but they just basically, instead of saying, you have, you can put it anywhere here, they're asking us to agree to put it in a narrower section, which is along our current path now.
Okay.
Am I permitted to ask a question to the fellow council members?
You're permitted to discuss.
Okay, well, you mentioned the thirty-three acres, and since this is a pretty big vote, I'd just like to ask the fellow council members, can you tell me where the thirty-three acres are? That we're voting on tonight?
Yes, he said it was on Kent and, is it forty-one?
Avonel.
By the Avonel Cut Off.
By the Avonel Cut Off, yeah.
So who owns that land currently?
Sandridge. Are they still asking me?
Yes.
Sandridge.
Just wanted to make sure, so we're good to go? Okay.
All right, well...
Yeah, nobody wanted it, you took it off? So close public comment if you have it.
Did we close public comment already? That's why I turned it over to the council after that.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and, need a motion on this, this one, seven-dash-five.
Make a motion to approve seven-five as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Stuart Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Holly Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, seven-dash-six, reporting recommendations, CIP, or CIP five-two-two-six, supplemental engineering and hydrological service.
Okay, that's mine.
Related to assigning the rehabilitating current city wells. Mr. Rivera?
So Mr. Rivera is attending a California building, training seminar, so he's out this week as well. So I'll take this one. So we currently have in CIP fifty-two-twenty-six, monies to rehabilitate city wells. So what this is tonight is the preliminary work to go down and get the engineering and hydrogeological on well number ten, which would just be a complete rehab. So we've budgeted three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget. This would be fifty-one thousand dollars towards the total project cost, not to exceed three-twenty-five, but this gives us an idea of what we need to do and go out to bid for on the well to get the bid package ready to go. Well number ten is our largest producer of water locally in the city. It's heavily relied upon during the summer months, and we try to idle it in the winter to let it kind of catch up and recharge a little bit, so this is a great time to do the maintenance on it. And this service will also provide the study to go out and get well number seven, which is, for those that don't know, well seven is located out by the college, it's north of the college, by La Prina Foods. We have three wells that come together at that site, and that's going to be our, one of our big treatment facilities. So that, we'll have actually groundwater monitoring built into that well, so we'll be able to watch static and dynamic levels of groundwater to relay information to the city, to look at our water supply, as well as the upcoming groundwater sustainability plan. It'll help aid in that as well to getting data to the engineers.
Okay, what is hydrogeological service? What is that hydrogeological?
It's water. It's water and basically how we pump it, what's wrong with the well, the condition of the well, the nitrates in the water, if there are any, the TOCs, and they'll look at the...
They're doing a lot of testing.
They'll look at the testing of the water, the makeup of the water, and that'll tell them how to attack the well, if they do an acid wash, and how much acid to use, and things of that nature.
Okay. What happens if we don't do this?
You could have a premature failure, and then instead of having planned maintenance, we could be coming to you with an emergency, we'd be playing catch-up. So we have had, we should really have our wells on a four-year cycle for these kind of works, at least to do the inspection, not necessarily the big overhauls. We've already done well twelve, we've done well thirteen, well fourteen, well seven. So this is our other big well, we're getting caught back up. There were several years where we had deferred maintenance, and we did have some premature failures on wells. So this is really just a best, a good manufacturing practice to keep good, sustainable water.
When was the last time this one was?
I want to say seven years ago. I could double-check and get back to you with that, but I want to say it was seven years, because it was one of the ones that was, I think ten was the last one that was done before we did the rash of other wells. That's why it wasn't done first.
This is kind of a certain story that Stratford had. If you don't go in and do preventive maintenance on your wells, you end up, your well will fail, and then you'll, you could have water issues in your town, so you won't have enough water for the people to drink.
Potentially, yes.
Yep.
Okay, let me open it to the public. I see there's none, back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve item seven-dash-six is written.
Ms. Holly Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Stuart Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay. Reporting recommendation, first amendment to amend with Corolla... Reporting recommendation, first amendment to amend with Corolla Engineers Industry for Water Treatment Plan Project Primary Design. Rivera?
Okay, so again Frank's out, so again, mayor and council members. So this is a, a change order for the services, for the agreement to Corolla Engineers. We contracted with Corolla to go out and get preliminary design numbers to go out to a bid package for our TTHM compliance order from the state. As previously stated in meetings, we have an extension until June of two thousand and twenty to complete this project. Being we tested heavily with, with the state to make sure we have a solution in place for our taxpayers' dollars, and we used outage technologies, we asked that during this ten percent design phase that they would use outage and get their, their feedback and support on the systems to make sure we have the best design package going forward. So we ended up with about, we're at about a thirty percent design, we're getting ready to go out to bid package, but there was an added cost for outside the scope to bring in outage in the amount of eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Your staff report actually shows ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty. That was because we were gonna have them do some SEQA documentation. We've since pulled the SEQA out of this, because now at about a thirty percent design, we're getting ready to move forward and go out to a design build, so we can get this project started and get equipment, get equipment ordered. So I'm asking for the, to approve the agreement with Corolla. You can, yeah.
Can I open this to the public? Anybody want to expound on this in the public? I see there's none, how about back to the council?
Was SEQA part of the original design?
So part of the SEQA document on the front end was, but they were actually gonna finish the SEQA all the way through to the end, but because we are going out to a design bid package now, the full SEQA will be done with the new design build team. So it would, they really don't have the need to do the SEQA to the end, because the design build team will build that into their, their project.
But did we pay for SEQA?
We paid for some preliminary, we paid for about four thousand dollars for some of the preliminary work.
And they did preliminary work, but now we're going design bid?
Now we're going, yeah, to a progressive design build, so we'll be bringing to council for approval.
Okay, I have a question. How many amendments do we foresee in this project?
So on this one, this will be it, this will close out the project for all the deliverables, we'll get it out to bid, and then as we go out to the design build, when the project gets to about sixty percent with the design build team, then they'll be able to start getting us dialed into a guaranteed maximum price on the project. This is the one for TTHM that we had an original budget-
Okay, this is on page ninety?
Of eighteen, eighteen million dollars. So this is the pre-work to get that out to bid.
Okay. Who was Crawford and Bowen?
They were the group that was gonna do SEQA, but they're no longer doing that.
Who we got doing it now?
It'll be up to the new design build team, it'll be part of their contract to, to prepare the SEQA documentation.
Okay, of, of this amount, how much is allocated for other project? Of this amount, how much?
There is no other project. This is solely it for this project.
This is it, okay, thank you.
This is it for the first phase of this project.
First stage?
First phase, yeah, to get it out to bid.
Okay, how many, how many phases are you gonna have on this?
We'll have, we'll have this phase, which will get us out to design build.
Phase one, okay.
Out to bid, so then we'll get those bid packages, and those have to come back to council for approval for a contract. So that'll be a second phase, and then we'll probably, when they get to sixty percent, get a guaranteed maximum price, that'll be the third phase.
What's the time range?
So we're hoping to have the design build team in place and have equipment ordered by midsummer of nineteen to hit our deadline of two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
It's about six to eight months lead time on equipment.
Okay.
And if we don't, if we don't do this by two thousand and twenty, what's the state gonna do to us?
So the state can impose fines on you if you do not finish by the completion date. The state has really worked with, in the past, they have worked well with the organizations, and they haven't really imposed fines if you're making significant progress, but our goal is to be completed and have these things online, so we're not in that predicament.
And the state is starting to crack down on TTHMs.
They are starting, they've changed enforcement, and sometimes if they do impose the fine, they let you credit it back to the project. But as long as you're in good faith and you can show you're, you're working towards it, but like I said, our goal is to have this project done and wrapped up before the deadline.
Plus we're giving good drinking water to our citizens, so.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's what that DW, that DDW, drinking, drinking, okay, and that TTHM is?
The TTHM is our total tri-halomethanes, that is the, that is what we are out of compliance for, and that's a result of all the chlorine we add to the organics, our total organic carbon in the water. It gives off a TTHM, and we are out of compliance with the state currently.
Okay, so they can find us?
They can if we don't finish the project in time, yes.
Okay. And what's the timeline?
We have till June of two thousand and twenty to be compliant.
Okay, thank you. Well?
I'll make a motion to approve item seven-seven as written.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Stuart Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, seven dash eight, reporting recommendations request a new censure. Mr. City Manager Olson?
Okay, so this one was given to staff by council, I believe, two meetings ago, to put on the calendar for a request for a new censure, so at this time it's open to the council to discuss.
I'd like to say that I was the one who called for this, but after I thought about it, and what I want to do is, is state that there's already a censure in place, this, so I feel that that's already adequate.
Everyone knows that the censure ended the second a new council was seated, so the new body would have to censor me again if they want me to be censured.
I, that, I don't believe that's correct, Ms. Councilwoman Blair.
So the censure is going to just stay into perpetuity, is that correct?
The, the, the censure, as I, and I don't have it in front of me, but as I recall, the censure will stay in, the restrict, the censure is, is a resolution. The censure had some mandates with it, and those mandates, per the resolution, will stay in place until the council as body changes them, rescinds them, or that you, that you're not on council, basically, would be the two terminating effects.
Okay, well, that's your guys' call. I genuinely would hope that we could start off on a good foot, but I'm not really holding my breath, so.
What was the scope on the first censure?
Can you clarify your question, mayor?
Okay, the first, we had, we had a censure when it was in there.
It was a resolution.
Okay, well, did that have to do with social media, or what was that?
There were, there were a lot of things involved in the censure, council rules of conduct, from recollection, council rules of conduct. I don't believe there was anything specific to social media, just comments that were, I believe it referenced comments on becoming, or, or something to that nature. There were, to be honest with you, mayor, I'd have to have it in front of me, there, it was a sixteen to twenty-page document.
They were for comments that I made four days after the agenda was posted that I was to be censured, so they were actually for things that were said after I was already on the agenda for it, so. Anybody wants to know, it's on my website, feel free to check it out. Callandotyblair.com.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, go ahead. Can I talk? It's also posted on this, on the lamore.com, so I'm not gonna, that's all I want to say. It's also posted on the city website, everything's there.
And the effect of that has only been that, that's less representation on the local boards that council members need to sit on, and I have asked for an attendance report, as of yet we still are not seeing that, but the idea that I would somehow not be able to attend the Latino caucus meeting, or the African-American caucus meeting is just ridiculous, and the idea that I'm going to somehow stop introducing myself as a council member is equally ridiculous, and for the most part, most people have trouble finding Lamore on the map. It's not really stopping me from leaving outside the city, it's just making the city look stupid, really. I mean, it really does, it makes us look foolish. When I go up to Sacramento and they're like, hey y'all, what's up? And they're like, that city's still acting like that, and I'm like, yeah, they are. It doesn't actually make us look good.
It also, it also makes the city look stupid, and what the things that you stated, and what was on Facebook, I mean-
I teach from that text.
Now, my thing, if I may, if I may, because things that was said over there, on the other side over here, the, the hand gestures, the words that was said next to me, okay, it's all in, I, I strongly suggest this council goes back and reads those statements, and reads the documents, and read the resolution, okay? What's before us today is a request for new censure, okay? What I'm stating is, is the existing censure, censure, I feel is adequate, okay? That's what I'm stating.
I have a prepared statement.
Okay, I was the one, if I may, I'm still talking, please, I was the one who asked for it.
Okay.
Now I'm humbly coming before council, okay? And I'm asking, I'm stating that I feel that what we have is adequate, okay? Now, if this council wants to go forth and, 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 and to deal with that past censure, I think that that's something for a future. That's all I have to say.
Well, I have a prepared statement, and I'll read that. And just before anyone starts, I already cleared it with my attorney, so let's not K. I was disappointed to see another request for a censure resolution on tonight's agenda. I think a history lesson would be appropriate at this point. I was elected to represent a constituency that for too long did not have a voice in this community, women, minorities, people of color, and the economically disadvantaged. I do not apologize for being their advocate. I stepped on the toes of people in power in this town, too bad. The city of Lamore is changing, a new leadership is coming forward. It was no coincidence that in a historic election, that swept out the relics of the political establishment. Our out-of-touch mayor lost his position too. I, for one, will be happy to see him go. I'm sure all of the volunteer firefighters that got stiffed on their paychecks won't be shedding any tears either. The lesson to be learned from him is that with female voters, will no longer be consigned to the back of the bus, and second place, and waiting our turn, and all of the other comments that have come my way. The lesson to be learned, misogyny and bigotry has a political price, as I'm sure Mr. Madrigal and his Restore Lamore folks have sadly learned. This censure nonsense should stop now. However, if this council insists on going forward, I would suggest that my future censure simply become a reoccurring item on the consent agenda, because I'm really not sorry for my behavior. I teach from those texts. I'm sorry that that makes you feel uncomfortable, but perhaps y'all should just grow up, because it seems to be appropriate in the college classroom.
Wait a minute.
You just like to say, don't interrupt when you're talking, but you have no problem doing it when I'm talking.
I apologize.
Go right ahead.
Hey, let's get, let's stick back to the agenda. Okay. Anybody in the public want to expound on this, or? Okay, I got one right there, okay. Thank you.
Tom Reed, ten sixty-five, Lamore. I had a prepared statement I wasn't gonna read at tonight's council, but he cited that I wouldn't, but I would like to just bring forward some of the items that I had on there. I'm not a longtime resident of Lamore, but in the few years that I've lived here, we've had four city managers. Two of the three previous city managers were dismissed. We've had a Parks and Recreation manager dismissed, a finance director dismissed, we've had a city council member censored, we've had a former mayor make comments that caused the city to be sued, we had a city council member make comments that has caused the city to be sued, and now we've come tonight with two new members, and a council member questioning the two members as to their knowledge. I find that demeaning, very demeaning. I also find it very irritating, if you will, that we now have council members raising their voice at each other, and you wonder why, you wonder why. I do, and I think we need some civility, I think we need some common sense by everyone, including me. If I misspeak, correct me, correct me. But this has got to change. A new censure is not gonna change anything, it's not gonna do anything. I think what's in place will be adequate, whether you like it or not, but I think we need to go forward with civility and think of what is best for the city, not what's best for me. I brought something before this council once that didn't turn out the way I would have liked, but that's the way it is, and I'm happy with that. You know, so let's go forward, and let's at least try to be civil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'd, I'd like, I'd like to tell that young mayor that there's something.
Yes.
So as your new councilman, I read this binder, I read it very well, front to back, and I read in there that it says that our mayor's job is to make sure orders kept here, and that's why the chief of police is sitting in here. So when people get out of order, they are asked to reel it back in, and if they outburst again, he removes them. I'm gonna hold my new mayor to that.
We still have a comment, go ahead.
In order for this to work, you must have each and every one of those. There's a link, it's a chain. I'm prior military, so therefore I know about the link in every chain, and if it's gonna be more of the same, guess what? The city is going to judge, 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 as I've already seen, because I'm sitting right there watching it. Unite for the city, for yourselves. I think that's about all I, that said it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to council.
I have, I have one comment. Councilmember Blair, you mentioned that there was no report of the meetings being attended by our electants. Those have been posted at the tail end with the warrants for the last two or three meetings, I believe, so this particular packet-
I believe some of the warrants were listed in the last meeting, correct?
It starts on, it starts on page one oh six.
I'm talking about the last meeting warrants.
It's there.
It's from, it's from January, January to November. Second, and it is, I misspoke, it's the second time it's been posted.
Can I get a motion, or?
Counsel, this item is just for direction, so if someone wants to provide direction, we're good, otherwise you're done with this item.
I'd like to provide direction that we, that we just, we already have, as I stated earlier, we already have something in play. Leave that as is, and don't go no further with this. That's, that's my recommended direction.
Can I get a consensus?
That means don't go any further.
I don't have a consensus.
We need three.
Need three.
Okay.
Does anyone want to provide a different direction? I see it's dead.
We could always remove the censure, because again-
There, there's no motion required on this item, and since no direction has been given-
Spirit.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't go anywhere.
Don't go nowhere. All right, city council reports and requests, section eight.
Well, I have my report of, part of the reason why, again, there is such a need to censor me, I was out at the reservation this weekend at a very wonderful summit, I am more than a number, and it was beautiful, and I took away a lot, especially from the organizing speaker, and actually, I would like to please go get something, because I wanted to show my thanks. Something I asked, but again, was ignored. This gift basket was received, given to the council by the Tachuco tribe, again, thanking us for reaching out and really trying to bridge a divide in this community, so that no longer we don't have their community members coming into town and others questioning, why are you here? Well, they're a part of our community as well, and they were excited to see the future of Lamore and the changes that were coming, and as of today, again, I'm the only council member that was out there this weekend, so it's really no surprise why they want to censor me so badly, and I ask that this be publicly displayed, and a public thank you be given in gratitude for that gift of kindness from the tribe. I had also, in the previous council, where there was no consensus given, which meant it died, but I'm going to ask again with the new council, that in the next future development, that we look at what the street signs are named, and as pointed out before, we like to name the names of prominent leaders of our community. Well, that is part of our community, I would like to give direction to have our, the, the city go and talk to the tribal leaders and ask them what sort of names they would like to see displayed in the community, so that the names of leadership that has been here for a long time can be honored and respected, and what better way to move the city forward in a bridge of healing than to have those names displayed in the next subdivision? So, again, I will come forward and ask that request. May I have consensus to move in that direction, to look into doing that in our next street signs?
You're talking about up and coming streets?
In the next possible development that we can do so, go out and talk to the tribal leaders, and we have some developments going on right now, yes, and, and ask if, there are some names that they'd like to see submitted, and, and to work jointly in asking what their guidance and what they would like to see cooperatively for the future of our city.
Okay, so, just so you have the whole, or more information, typically when a subdivision comes in, the subdivision usually has a theme or a name, and the, the contractors or the developers name it kinda after the theme of their, the city does name streets and roads when we do like main arterials and things like that, so I would think it would better serve that the city reserve that right, if we expand a road or a main arterial, that's not part of a subdivision, unless the subdivision, of course, fits into that, that theme, I guess, it would, would be the difference, but that's kinda how subdivisions get their names now, that they fall in line with the theme of the community.
But we could make that request with them, could we not? And as a council, ask for the staff as guidance to do such things, like to ask that during the time when they, when you guys talk, hey, would it be okay to do that? Like, I want a consensus of our council to ask staff to do that, to actually open up the, that communication.
Can we get a consensus from the council, or what you guys want?
When they refuse to answer, that's a no, by the way.
No, you didn't.
It's not honoring consensus, so it's a no.
I have no problem with it. My thing is, it's called communication and dialogue, and, and that's where too is, is when these plans come across people's desk and planning commissions and things of that nature, so I have no problem with that, I mean, and there's other groups in our, in our community too, I mean, so, instead of just opening up one, we'll just open it up to everybody.
It's not consensus.
I got two.
It's just, it's direction.
I'd prefer to take it, one subdivision at a time that's new, and, and cross, cross that bridge when we get there.
Agreed.
Okay.
So that means that's a no, or does that mean a yes?
Seems like there's a consensus there, we got more than.
As a yes?
Mm-hmm, it's a yes.
Okay.
All right.
The consensus is just, so for clarity, the consensus is simply to direct staff to look into both communicating with groups, including the tribe, and other groups in the community, when, and consult with them regarding their thoughts regarding names, and potentially speaking with developers about that. Did I summarize that correctly?
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking.
So it's gonna be the next, so the next subdivision that comes in, you'll open up that communication, I just want clarity, is that correct?
That's what I'm asking, that's, that's what we're seeking.
Yes, that's what I specified.
Yeah, thank you.
And the last question, I, I just have a question, actually, because I, I, again, wanted to express my gratitude to the tribe, and as a council, we should, and I'm just curious to know why my request to please have that displayed and a thank you be given was ignored.
'Cause you didn't ask the question.
I did.
Are you asking the question now?
I, I did.
Are you asking for consensus of council? Please be, please, please let me know what you want.
I made it clear that I'd like to see a thank you note in there for us to sign, so that we could all sign it, so we could all participate in saying thank you, and that was ignored, and I'm just curious to why.
It's not ignored, I just want you to ask the question.
Okay, then, so I have to ask permission to please get a thank you note out here so we can sign it. Is everybody okay with saying a thank you to the tribe for the thank you for the gift basket? Can we all say thank you? Do we really have to argue about thank yous now, really?
No, and my thing is, is I'd like to go a little further and say, we should, everybody who submits a basket to us, we make sure we thank them all.
Absolutely.
Not this one, we thank everybody, 'cause there's probably others that will be coming in.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Oh, um, I don't have nothing, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Stuart Lyons?
Well, obviously I don't have a whole lot to report, but I just wanted to thank everybody for letting me be a part of this, and I look forward to moving forward, I guess, so to speak.
And I apologize, I just would like to say, congratulations being on, on, on board, looking forward to working with everybody here, everybody, so, sorry. Sorry I came out of line here.
No problem.
Mr. Billingsley?
So just like Mr. Lyons, I'm, I'm currently not on any committees, I don't have anything to report, but I am happy to be up here. I think despite what you've seen tonight, we can pull together and do a good job, and that's what everybody from, from what I've heard tonight wants, and so I wanna ask Ms. Blair if she's ready to make a fresh start, regardless what you put on social media today about myself and Stuart, can we drop that, start over, and get some work done?
The answer is, I genuinely think that all of you are terrible people, and I don't think that you have the best interest of the city at heart.
Okay.
You have the best interest of yourselves at heart, and no, there is no fresh start, because I think you're terrible people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I'm done.
Okay, I, I have something to say.
I figured you'd say that.
Appreciate everybody coming today, and it's my first time, you know, second time doing this, and if I, if I may, I, I just wanna say to all the council members, everybody I treat equally, I thank all of us, I'm so happy to see the new council as well, I, I thank God for Dave Brown and all of you guys, even though we don't see eye to eye, but it's a team, it's a team effort, and if we can't do this as a team, we're gonna spiral down, but I really believe that we can all come together and do this as a team, so, people may laugh, but I tell you what, when I first ran for city council, they laughed, and now I'm there, so what I must say is I thank God for that, and I thank God for all you guys being here, and it is now nine oh four.